Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day and bringing this place of tangible and[9.21][9.21]intangible blessings to numerous to measure. Bless the city of Norfolk, bless every citizen who resides within its boundaries and every city employee who makes, who works to make our city great. Father, bless our mayor, our city manager, and this council as we labor together in the calling of public service. Give us the wisdom to govern fairly and ethically with equality, integrity, and compassion, and allow us to represent our city in a spirit of excellence. I pray that you will guide us through these difficult economic times and give us the strength and wisdom we need to make the decisions that face us. This we ask in your son's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Thank you very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Burford?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Nguyen?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to excuse Mr. Riddick, please.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you being here. For those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the process that we're going to follow this evening is the first thing we're going to do is take up the public hearings, and there are two of them. After we finish the public hearings, we'll move to the consent agenda, a couple matters there. Council is entitled to vote on both of those matters in one vote act. We may do it separately. Then we'll move directly to the regular agenda. We'll vote on all these matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the regular agenda, any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, that's something that's not on our printed docket. You'll be given that opportunity, but in order to have your name called, you must first have signed a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in the rear of the council chambers before the meeting begins. Before we get to our, the public hearings, though, we do have one ceremonial matter. Mr. Riddick, Jim, will you want to come forward? Jim is the Director of Emergency Preparedness and Response, and we have a proclamation here for Norfolk Telecommunicators Week. Jim, I'll read it, and we'd love to hear from you. It reads, "Whereas dedicated public safety telecommunications, dispatchers, and 9/11 call-takers daily serve the citizens of Norfolk by answering their calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services, and by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible, and whereas professional telecommunicators work to improve the emergency response capabilities of our communication system through their dedication, hard work, and participation in ongoing training and other programs. Whereas these telecommunicators provide a critical service needed by all citizens, whereas these professionals need and deserve the informed support of our community to continually maintain and improve the quality of public safety dispatching services. Whereas the city of Norfolk has designated the second week of April as a time to honor and recognize our telecommunicators and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens, now therefore I call for Mayor of the city of Norfolk to hereby proclaim April the 8th through the 14th, 2012, as Norfolk Telecommunicators Week. And the city of Norfolk can urge all citizens to make note of this special week and give due honor to our city's public safety telecommunicators, given under my hand this 10th day of April 2012." Let me give this to you, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, an important matter for us. Would you like to say a couple words here?
Yes.
If I may, I'd like our folks to stand up and stand proud for this week. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Jones. As you may know, the last 12 months, our folks have answered over 267,000 calls for service requiring assistance from police, fire, and rescue. Each time the phone rings, you never know what you're going to get. There's going to be a variety of issues, mostly stressful, and to put it bluntly, folks aren't having a good day when they're calling 911. Our folks are trained, professional, and they remain calm when others cannot. We appreciate this recognition for National Telecommunicator Week, but also appreciate the opportunity to report to you that our own Angela Johnson, who was not only nominated and selected as Telco of the Year internally from her peers, but also through the Association of Public Communicator Officers, the AppCo Association, for Telecommunicator of the Year for the state of Virginia. So. Great, well, thank you. Thanks to all of you for coming down. Certainly appreciate your service. I know people are having a tough day when they call you, but I know you have tough days all the time. So, but, but thank you. It's a stressful job. Somebody's got to do it, and you guys are, you know, good to try. So, thanks very much. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the ceremonial matters. We'll move directly then to public hearing number one. Mr. Clerk?
Public hearing one, scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on March 27, to hear comments to vacate a six-foot public pedestrian easement at 235 East Plume Street.
All right, there, there's no one signed up to address the council on this matter? You can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance vacating a six-foot public pedestrian easement at 235 East Plume Street, as shown on the platent titled, "Plat Showing Former City Hall Annex Building to Be Sold by City of Norfolk, Virginia to Norfolk Port and Industrial Authority." Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing two.
Public hearing two, scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on March 27, 2012, on the application of Thomas M. Ty for the closing vacating and discontinuing of a portion of Bye County Road between East Little Creek Road and Mason Avenue.
All right, Mr. Pickrell is here, is the attorney for the applicant, and Tom Ty, Mr. Ty is here as well, if any member of the council has any questions.
I just want to make sure we've worked out any issues with the civic leagues in that area, because I know we delayed this vote. And the last correspondence I had with the two civic leagues were that they were okay with it, knowing what the law allows us to do and what we can't do. And Frank, too, if you can jump in?
Yes, sir, we have. We have written confirmation from them that they're in agreement with what's proposed.
Okay. And here Mr. Ty, Tom Ty.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes.
Frank, you want to add something?
Mr. Ty is correct about civic league sending letters indicating that they are supporting the closure of Bye County.
Okay. Any other questions? Ready? I call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance closing vacating and discontinuing a portion of Bye County Road and authorizing the conveyance to certain of the abutting property owners of any interest the city may have in the underlying fee of said portion of Bye County Road. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Just real quickly, for those of you who have your iPads up, and if you scroll to page 11, where there is an aerial shot of the, this area, this is a paper street that runs through a large part of the community over there. And I don't know now that we're closing this off and allowing this to happen, that if the city would be interested in, and it's not like a gem lot where I think you can approach a property owner and ask them if they want to purchase the site, because these, it's a fairly large area that you can actually build houses on. And I don't know now if the city would be interested in talking with the civic leagues in that area and seeing whether or not there's any interest in trying to sell that as for single-family homes, the remainder of that. I don't know why, I don't think we have any utilities underneath this area. I may, may be incorrect with it, but if you look at the aerial, you can see it's a large swath that goes through this area, and if there's an opportunity for us to sell that now. And Frank, you want to say something?
With the street closure, Mr. Ty being the applicant, Mr. Ty will get title to the land that abuts his property. The adjoining property owner and the residential piece, because there is one residential piece on that we get title to, the piece of land that would go to them, it is not large enough to create a separate lot.
No, I'm talking about on the other sides of it, Bye County Road, as a paper street runs through, not the part that he is, but it runs all the way through
Correct.
the northern part of South Bayview, and it also runs across Little Creek Road over into the trailer park area.
You're talking about the two blocks that are north of this?
Right, yeah, and also south. I don't, we, we own that, so if, this is never going to be a road now, because...
I would have to defer to Mr. Pishko, because before we could sell the land, we would have to close.
Right.
I think it's very sensible to evaluate that this portion has two utility easements that we're reserving for, but if we don't need it, you're correct, that if it can be put to productive use, that would be very sensible, so.
Yeah, please not apartments, but single-family homes would be okay.
We should get it evaluated.
Okay, yeah, just an idea with that, so, aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The consent agenda, the two matters here, does any member of council want to have either one of these matters considered separately? I call the roll.
Through the consent agenda, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R1.
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment on property located at 1907 Colonial Avenue. By six-year vote, planning commission recommends approval.
All right, no one's here to address the council on this matter? You can call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
This is the part that's being... Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
I'd say aye.
Oh, did, can you hear it?
That's all right.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R2.
An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment on property located at 2400 Llewellyn Avenue. By six-year vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Stacy Wells, is it Beagle? I'm sorry. It's, are you here to answer questions? Okay. Gia Purcell, then?
Yes.
Would you like to come on up?
My name is Gia Purcell, and I reside at 3118 Tidewater Drive Apartment C. I would like to thank the city council for your continued service to our city. I know that the work that you do is not always easy, and some of the decisions you make can be difficult. We pray that you remain encouraged despite all adversity. I would like the council to consider approval or reconsider their approval for R2 of this community center to operate as an entertainment establishment. At its beginning, the marketing for the center was dressed as a resource for youth, persons with HIV/AIDS, and those struggling with sexual identity. Among the noted reasons that Mr. Sujer stated in the Virginia pilot was, I like, and I quote, "I like seeing the young people who don't want to hang out in the bars but can still socialize." And he also says, "This will give us a place where we can meet and feel safe." Well, how is providing alcohol, which is the leading drug in the United States, contribute to the cause of encouraging our youth and to the safety of this self-proclaimed community center? It would seem contradictory for this community center to hold events that would allow consumption of this drug. With Blair Middle School, the Governor's School of the Arts, Ghent Elementary, and Maury High School in the immediate vicinity, this will have, there will be an issue of public safety. Council may need to reexamine this. Is it possible that the organization has deceived the community? And is it possible that city council may not realize the true intent of this property? Could it be that the true motive and result for this property is a nightclub? If the council approves this application, this area particularly, will not only morph into seediness and reproach, it will incur additional liabilities resulting in fraud, waste, and abuse, which usually extends to financial losses to taxpayers. Alcohol is not permitted in any community centers within the city of Norfolk. So what makes this community center any different? Should, should this community center not operate under the same ordinances as the other community centers in the city of Norfolk? Safe place indeed. This center was never for the entire community. Its intent was and is to exclude people. This is a form of segregation. This community center is being groomed to operate as a nightclub. Let us see it for what it really is. For the good of the residents of Park Place and its surrounding neighbors, I exhort the council to reconsider and reject this application, and I pray that righteousness will prevail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Wells-Beagle, would you like to reply to any of that? Please.
Mr. Mayor, while she's coming up, according to the application, alcohol is only going to be allowed when there's a special banquet permit. Can there, I, I've never heard of that, but can there be an explanation from Frank on what that means?
That's, that means they don't serve. Right. Frank, tell everybody.
Mr. Mayor, the LGBT center is requesting an entertainment special exception because they do want to be able to have special events at their, their site. We have allowed something similar to this at a couple of other locations where the only locate, the only people who are then able to be responsible for the site when alcohol is being served are one of these authorized entities that are, is a not-for-profit group or a governmental entity that would be there for having a fundraiser of some sort. They need the special exception in order to be able to do it for that purpose. And this is written fairly broadly. I know council member Williams had asked me about this. It has to be written fairly broadly because the LGBT center can't tell you exactly what days of the week or what times of the day that they may have one of these authorized entities looking at the site. I think this is the third place in the five years that I've been in Norfolk which has sought a special exception for this purpose.
Could you tell us what those are, the other ones were?
Off the top of my head, I can't.
The Granby Theater at a point in the history of their commitment, one of them?
Yeah, you're right. The Granby Theater is one of them, and I know there's one other one, but I can't, oh, it's, the Sheldon Arcade is the other one that has...
But these are, these...
And they, the School of Rock, thank you. I knew there were three.
What is this, what is this place now?
It's the LGBT Community Center, and they, they do a lot of outreach into the community. Basically, what they want to do is just be able to serve alcohol at special events. There's not going to be a bar, they're not going to be open serving alcohol, whatever time alcohol is available. It's basically for special events. For example, we were there for a, Barclay and I were there for a Harbor Club, Harbor event, and they were unable to serve wine and beer at that event because there was not a special exception. Everybody was over the legal drinking age, there weren't any children that were there. They've been very responsible neighbors in that community. I mean, they've been there for 15, 20 years or more and have been very responsible in the community. It's not to allow them to just become a bar or a club, but part of the reason that we had to make it so broad was because, you know, you can't say when someone may want to hold an event on a Thursday night, it may be on a Wednesday night, it may be on a Saturday night. So it has to be broad so that they have some flexibility, but it's certainly not, from what I understand and from what I've seen at the events that I've attended there, it's not intended to be a bar or a club. It's way, first of all, it's way too small, but it's not intended, it's not intended for that.
Whoever has these events would have to have a banquet permit to go.
Absolutely.
So you don't go in there, mix a drink, and go, I mean, it would be a special, and I was also in there and was very impressed by what they're doing and how they're running it. And I don't foresee any problems with the neighborhood.
Yeah. Obviously, there are no promoters allowed. No.
Right, no.
And they went before the civic league, they went to Park Place, they spoke to the civic league, they spoke to the executive board of the civic league, they came back, they answered questions. They've really reached out to the community, but it's, it's a, it's a good spot, and what they, they just want to be able to have social, it's like the socials, and, and have beer and wine. And they need a special exception in order to be able to do that.
Per night, per banquet facility.
Right.
And Dr. Whibley, well, there would not be, what we know as third-party promoters coming in, that one of these charitable entities could promote their own event. So if the Kiawanas was in there to raise funds for children, they could promote that, but not a third party.
Okay.
Jared one.
I think the other thing we agreed to was to limit the attendance at the, at the special events to 49 people, so that it would be smaller. And then also, we need the special exception permit in order to be able to do youth events that are entertainment in nature, so if there is a disc jockey or something like that for those types of youth events, we need this permit for that component for the youth as well.
And the youth events don't have alcohol?
No, not at all. Not at all.
Okay, thank you very much.
What are the times for the youth events?
I mean, it just depends on when they're scheduled. We...
From what to what? What would be...
They're not set times, it's whenever somebody, and every winter we schedule them for our programming, but they're not exact times. We would have everything done for youth events no later than 12, but our youth...
There's a curfew at 11.
And that would be fine. But depending on the youth that we're serving, in our mind, youth services go up to 24 for the LGBT programming that we do, for the CDC grant that we have. But if we had individuals in there under the age of 18, we would limit that event to 11. Absolutely.
Frank?
Is that, is that in the application? Or do we need some modification? Because, I mean, that goes counter to our...
Curfew.
...curfew.
The curfew law would not be affected by this, it would still be, be applicable, just as Ms. Wells-Beagle has indicated. The, whenever we do a special exception, it provides for the outer limits of when they'd be able to, to be operating, so it would not have a separate indication in this, the special exception dealing with people that would be impacted by the curfew. But the curfew ordinance would still be applicable.
And I, it's my understanding, too, with curfew law, that you can actually be in a facility after 11 o'clock or in transport to home.
That's from work.
From work?
Right. Be with a dog.
Then, well, then all of our proms in the city violate curfew law.
Pretty much.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3, please.
R3 is an ordinance accepting with appreciation the donation of $15,000 to the city from the Friends of the Norfolk Public Library, and appropriating and authorizing the use of the funds to support library services and programs with a preference for the purchase of eBooks.
I know there's some members here of the Friends of the Public Library, would anybody like to make any comments or say anything, or would you, maybe you could just stand, and we could thank you for it? Okay, you want to do it, all right? Great.
Thank you for just a moment. My name is Elizabeth Woodard, and I'm a co-president for the Friends, and we do have a group here. Then we'd like to say thank you for all of your support in the public library. It is such an exciting time for our library, that we just wanted to add a little bit of our own support, so if I could get them to stand up, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, you've also made a significant pledge to the Slover Library as well, so thank you for that. So, okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R4.
An ordinance accepting with appreciation the donation of $5,100 to the city from the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, and appropriating and authorizing the use of the funds to support library services and programs with a preference for the purchase of additional books, reading, or educational materials at the Pretlo Anchor Branch Library. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5, please.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the construction of a passenger rail station at 150 Park Avenue. A six-year vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Okay, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
I'm going to vote aye, but I want to thank the administration, I want to thank certainly the manager, but Ron Williams and Frank and, I don't seek high for, but everybody who worked so hard on this project. I know we got off to a questionable start, but I think this design is really an excellent one. I know it has broad community support, so, and that's very important here for this thing. So, you know, thanks for listening, thanks for getting me to listen, you know, so, appreciate it. Great, aye. R7.
Six, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, six.
An ordinance to amend and reordain sections 18.1-2 and -10 of the Code of the City of Norfolk, Virginia, 1979, modifying the United States Food and Drug Administration food code so as to permit baked goods prepared in home kitchens subject to state inspection to be offered for public consumption. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R7, please.
R7 is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption on property located at 100 West 21st Street. By 3-2 vote, planning commission recommends denial.
Okay, there are 13 folks who have signed up to address the council on this matter. Then we would like you to limit your remarks to three minutes, please. Mr. Romine, I know you've signed to answer questions, but do you have, but let me call you first.
Did you hear about the pregnant woman that was stabbed in front of the 7-Eleven? Across from these employees? She was with the money back.
Good evening, Mayor Frame and members of the City Council. My name is Steve Romine, local attorney, 999 Waterside Drive, Norfolk. I have with me Sandy Judy, Riaz Vazarelli, and Josh Bazes from the company that can answer questions that I may not be able to. Tonight, we're asking for two special exceptions on the facility at 100 West 21st Street for 24 hours operation and ABC off-premises. This application tonight is a application for remodeling of an existing commercial building at 100 West 21st Street. 7-Eleven will be a tenant in a portion of the building. I won't repeat the history that's in your report, but I will note a letter of support from the Roseland Company with respect to the apartments that are going to be across the street from us, supporting this operation. Mr. Snyder will speak to you momentarily. He's been in business at this corner for over 40 years with his family business of, including your package, handout 1 and 2, which shows a couple of the surrounding facilities that are there already, the IHOP and the Speedy Muffler, just to give you an idea of what is existing. The parcel is about 12,000 square feet. It's a wig store currently, and it lays within the city's 21st Street overlay district. There is no residential impact. Handout 3 shows you the distances from the residential area, and this is in a heavy commercial corridor. The property is Zone C2, and by special exception, we can request that you grant us the 24 hours exception, ABC off-premises. I'm going to be brief. At least six reasons we think this ought to be approved. 7-Eleven will share the building with a long-established business. It will preserve a business that's been operating here for a very long time. Secondly, the proposed improvements will greatly enhance and dramatically improve the corner. In your package attached to the Gant Business Association approval letter is the final approved plan that was negotiated and approved by the company and the Gant Business Association. 7-Eleven will spend substantial sums of money constructing the remodel, and will include landscaping and state-of-the-art lighting, together with a bike rack and other significant improvements. These improvements, number three, we believe will be a catalyst for additional improvements in the Gant corridor. Fourth, 7-Eleven is a good corporate citizen. It significantly contributes to employment in the Norfolk tax base. The expected increased retail sales will enhance tax revenue for the city. Fifth, staff supports the project, as noted in this report, consistent with the general plan, the 21st Street overlay and the zoning ordinance. And last, economic development supports the project, as well as the Gant Business Association. 7-Eleven has worked closely with staff and city leadership to come up with this design you see tonight. We've not been able to win the support of the Gant Neighborhood League. They're here tonight to speak their thoughts. We have heard them. They have some concerns about other operational issues at existing 7-Elevens, and they have also asked us to eliminate single cells. In summation, we have support of Gant Business Association. We believe this is a significant investment and a substantial enhancement to a visible corner. I'll leave you to look at the package, which has the outline of the new design, and we want to thank the Gant Business Association.
Mr. Romine, what about the single cells? The sales of single, the draft that you had?
Yeah, the single cells will be prohibited at this store.
Right.
But the Gant Neighborhood League asked us to eliminate single cells in all our other stores.
Okay.
And we were unwilling to do that. Yeah, we are clearly, and we are establishing cameras on the outside of this store, as well as all the other 7-Elevens in the Norfolk area. I apologize for running over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Ott?
Hello, Susannah Ott, 7-Eleven Colonial Avenue. Thank you for letting me come here tonight. I stand here in opposition to the further expansion of 7-Elevens in Gant. Norfolk, when I think of Norfolk many years ago, it was just not that pretty of a city. And Mayor Frame, thanks to your leadership and City Council, I mean, when I think of Norfolk now, I think Norfolk, you've come a long way, baby, because this city just continues to improve and be so much more attractive to live here and to visit. So I thank you for all your hard work. That's part of the reason I'm here, is because people in the past, what I've read in the paper, have been calling 7-Elevens luxurious. And I really can't imagine any visitor or resident of Norfolk ever concurring with that. Unfortunately, our area, particularly in Gant, has become oversaturated with 7-Elevens. And unfortunately, 7-Elevens attract a criminal element. And the Planning Commission noted, when this came before them, the high volume of calls, and they were very concerned about that in relation to crime and other incidents occurring at the 7-Elevens. The Department of Justice did a study of convenience store robberies. Convenience stores have the highest rate of workplace homicide, second only to cab drivers. If you put this 7-Eleven there, it is a perfect location for crime. It's in a dead zone at night. There's nothing around there lit up or open. It's by the railroad tracks. It's by empty warehouse buildings. It's around the corner from the Salvation Army site, where you probably are aware, several shootings, a gun has been found, a man was murdered there. And you probably are aware of the wall that's there, where people prostitute themselves at night. So it makes it very convenient for a lot of folks, but not so much the nice families and residents in Gant. I'm, I'm sorry, I only had five minutes to prepare for this, or I would have prepared better, but just doing a five-minute Google search in our area, I found January 25th, January 7th, two robberies. April 7th, robbery by two men with knives. April 10th, stabbing of the pregnant woman. This doesn't even include, I drove by the beautiful 7-Eleven on Hampton Boulevard, right by ODU, and it is a beautiful 7-Eleven. However, now it's by the, by the black fence in the front, there's a cross dresser there soliciting themselves. So why do these people pick 7-Elevens? We are one of many neighborhoods fighting expansion of 7-Elevens nationwide. New Haven, Connecticut, in January, Portland's neighborhood called 7-Elevens the blight of the gate of our neighborhood. However, the 7-Eleven in Bay County, all the 7-Elevens in Bay County, Michigan, won a prize for the most robbed stores.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ott.
Thank you.
Can you, you got one other sentence you want to say?
Yes. I appreciate you giving very serious consideration, because I don't believe 7-Elevens attract the kind of residents and visitors that Norfolk would want. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Snyder?
Good evening. My name is Steve Snyder. I apologize, I'm not a good public speaker, so I'm going to read my thoughts. My wife, Ann, and I are the owner-operators of Gail's Wigs and Things. We are the second generation of this 61-year-old, family-owned and family-run business begun by my parents, Sam and Lillian, on Church Street in 1951. In 1974, we moved our business to its present location on the corner of 21st Street and Granby in the Gant Business District. We've conducted business on 21st Street for 38 years. Our store is housed in a building that is 4,100 square feet. We can easily operate our business in one quarter of that space. In these uncertain economic times, we, like most small businesses, are fighting to stay afloat. Therefore, it is absolutely necessary for us to lease at least one half, if not three quarters, of our building to a good credit, long-term, commercial tenant, in order to supplement the income of our store and to continue to operate our business. In March 2011, we listed our property for lease with Lindsay Bilisoli of Harvey Lindsay Commercial Real Estate as our agent. Eventually, we received an offer from 7-Eleven Corporation. We signed a lease with them in July 2011. 7-Eleven has agreed to fund the entire construction of their new store and the total remodeling of our building, which is presently an aging 1970s-era structure. The design of this new building was done in consultation with the Gant Business Association and with the City Planning Division. This project has the total support of the Gant Business Association. The 7-Eleven store will occupy 2,600 square feet of our building. Our business will operate in the remaining 1,500 square feet. The additional revenue stream provided by monthly rent from our tenant 7-Eleven will help us to continue the operation of our 61-year-old family business. This brand-new building, new parking lot, and new landscaping will completely revamp our corner of 21st Street. Our store in the 7-Eleven next door will generate increased tax revenues for the city and state through real estate and property taxes, sales tax, payroll tax, et cetera. For my part, I will not be an absentee landlord, because I'll be operating my business next door every working day and only a mile away when I go home at night. We have always run Gail's Wigs and Things as a first-class operation, and we will continue to do this on our corner with 7-Eleven as our neighbor. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, and I just want to add, we do have a 24-hour IHOP right next to us. Thank you.
Mark Perro?
This is the Civic League map.
Good evening. My name is Mark Perro. My address is 950 Hanover Avenue. The 7-Eleven with a parking lot in front is asking for special use exceptions, privileges you have no obligation to afford. A lot has been said or will be said as to why these privileges should or should not be granted. Only one consideration should govern. Does this operation further the city's vision for 21st Street or detract from it? If it detracts from our vision, that should end the matter, and the exception should be denied. The city has a longstanding vision for 21st Street, that over time, it should become a vibrant pedestrian street, which means buildings built up on the sidewalk with surface parking lots either nonexistent or out of sight. That is why there's a pedestrian overlay for 21st Street in our zoning code, and it was established with good reason. The street lies on the north side of the historic Gant District, and the city correctly recognized that a pedestrian-friendly 21st Street would both enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors and further the economic success of the district and the city overall. The most vibrant, livable, and successful urban districts in the nation, from Old Town, Alexandria, to Georgetown, to South Beach, to Charleston, and Boston's Back Bay, all follow similar principles for protecting and enhancing their character. So should we. The design of this setback 7-Eleven store with parking in front, the landowner's personal situation, and other matters not relevant to furthering the 21st Street vision should not be determinative. Ad-hoc decision-making destroys any vision. The simple fact is that if 7-Eleven occupies this site in its current configuration, it will be a very, very long time before the city again has any opportunity to get a business on that strategic corner that conforms to the 21st Street up on the sidewalk vision. If you deny these exceptions, the future is uncertain, but there is the possibility you'll have another opportunity to shape that street in our vision. There must be consistency and patience of a vision to be realized. I am increasingly worried about Norfolk's future as it sputters from one planning issue to another. A drive-through Chick-fil-A on Monticello, which could over time become a great street if we established and enforced a pedestrian overlay there, drive-through Taco Bell and Dunkin' Donuts on Hampton Boulevard, at what should become an impressive gateway to ODU, and a pleasing connector between Gant and Larchmont and ODU, and talk about more demolition of historic buildings downtown. There is another aspect to this, too. By our success in the past in creating improved neighborhoods and districts, we invite exploitation of that success by businesses which, with which, which wish to profit from that success without contributing to the character that created it. A 7-Eleven will take business from businesses that have contributed to our urban fabric while giving little back. This, this, these special exceptions should be denied, and I ask you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Riaz Vazarelli?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I represent, I'm a market manager of a several corporate stores. We operate business in the city of Norfolk, Portsmouth, and other cities. We've met with the Gant Business League, Neighborhood League, and had a discussion with them as far as improvement of our current properties. We have made efforts to whatever they wanted to get accomplished, we have worked in that direction. For example, you know, no posters in the front window to give it a clear look. We've been doing that at their request. There were some landscape issues that we have taken care of, of removing. There's a couple of stores that we still need to re-take care of and redo new planning for. They had some other trees, et cetera, in the current stores where they had issues with, excuse me, issues with, we have gotten, gotten that removed. As far as the new store is concerned, if it wasn't a viable option for us as a company, we wouldn't be going on that corner, wouldn't be wanting that site. Along those lines, given the request of the regulations, we are not going to be selling single-cell alcohol in that particular store, complying with the regulation that we have. It's going to have no outside fixtures of ice machines, et cetera, because I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the design. It's a, it's a great design. And with all due respect to Mr. Mark Perro's comments as far as the corner is concerned, if we don't go in there and, you know, maybe there'll be somebody else going in there down the road if it gets denied, but the question is, look at the corner where it exists today with all due respect to Mr. Snyder's property and what we are proposing as a company to invest in the property and improve the, improve the corner. So it's going to have the state-of-the-art security cameras, not only that store, this is as of last month, the company has approved DVR systems, high-tech security cameras throughout every single 7-Eleven in the city of Norfolk, in the state of Virginia. So that's already underway. Now, is it going to come to all the stores in Gant in the next month? Probably not. Will it get here before the year end? Probably yes. As far as the news and location is concerned, it's going to have the state-of-the-art security cameras if securities are concerned. As far as the incidents that was brought up earlier, that, you know, I don't think we attract crime as a retailer, okay? We have 900 to 1,000 guests who come frequent our business. We meet their needs, and that's why we're in existence for business. We meet their needs. So as far as the crime is concerned, it is unfortunate. There are elements that take place in every business. You know, those are just the risks there are. So I want to make sure that the City Council would, I would appreciate their involvement as far as looking at and reviewing the data, what we have currently as far as the crime statistics are concerned.
Excuse me, sir, if I could, I noticed that in the rendering that was produced by Mr. Romine today, the current Wigs and Things sign would be gone. Am I correct?
The latest one, that's correct.
And it looks like under the latest drawing, the, I hate to say, Mr. Snyder, but the tacky wig will be gone from the facade?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing I, I, you know...
Wait a minute, that was, that's historic. It's historic, and we have to preserve it.
Yes, and I think...
Mark, I don't think that's what Mark said. Historic.
I mean, I think it's a very viable improvement to the current site there is, sir.
I just wanted to make sure that the sign was gone. I'm just curious about the wig. Thank you. Irene O'Brien?
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak before you and everybody. My name is Irene O'Brien. I live on Brandon Avenue, right behind the 7-Eleven on Colley, right across from Blair Middle School. One thing before I talk about my points, I do want to say, the wig, I actually liked it because it added some fun character. But anyways, you know, we are here for two reasons, and that's because they have to have an, you know, special exception to allow alcohol sales and 24, and be open for 24-hour retail. The fact of the matter is, currently, within Gant, we have five stores, including Gant and West Gant. Our needs are served sufficiently to get alcohol and 24-hour sales alone with 7-Eleven. And there are others who are open 24 hours and, you know, provide alcohol sales, you know, that, we're saturated, we're fine. The other thing is, is that, you know, over the years, 7-Eleven has not been a good neighbor to our community. We have had problems, and it's unfair and unfortunate that it took them wanting to open up an additional store in our community for them to actually act upon something. So right now, they're acting upon it. What's going to happen once they get the store in? Are we going to see them actually do something like, let's say, the landscaping that was promised that would be done six months ago that, you know, I guess still being planned on? The cameras, it's a corporate, you know, thing that they're doing, blanketing across the state. It's not because of Gant. It's something that they're doing all over. We don't know if they can pull those cameras at any time at their decision, so we may never see those cameras. There is a safety concern, there is a crime element. And I know some people say, oh, it's not, that's just how it is. I live at that store. I've had, I've been pretty much pushed up against the wall on a Sunday, you know, 1:00 in the afternoon, from somebody panhandling me and me refusing. I don't have that problem at Harris Heater, Jim Walters, Rite Aid, Eckerd, or any of the other stores. Never had that problem. I do repeatedly have that problem at 7-Eleven. One of the other things is, is that with that current location, we're very concerned about the traffic. You know, we think that all, you know, later, we're going to be back here in a year saying, we need help. It's a big traffic issue. There's going to be a lot of people going in and out. Also, I also ask that you, as a city, support what the Planning Commission, you know, they denied this, and we ask that you support that. And also, lastly, I would like to mention that the posters that were originally moved from the windows was not due to, you know, compromising with us. It was due us to pointing out to 7-Eleven that there is a 50% transparency ordinance on their stores, and that those were covering up those 50% transparency, and they were also covering up safety concerns. You know, sometimes I just hope that you think that it's not about the bottom line, getting tax revenue, but it's about the community and supporting the community and what's best for the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry Littman?
My name's Larry Littman. I live at 1018 Colonial Meadows Way, Virginia Beach, Virginia, but I am an old Gant boy. You know, I came here to speak on Steve's behalf, but now that I find out he's giving the wig up, I might switch sides, because I like that wig also. But anyway, just a few things that I made, I made note of here, which have been reiterated, employing the citizens, tax revenue for the city, improvement of the property, really your greatest security is a well-lighted, well-visited area, which will be much better than it is now. I also believe in allowing a small businessman to, you know, sort of decide what he wants to do with his business and his life and his property. And when I ride by 7-Eleven, I don't see what some people see. I see kids getting slurpees. I see parents getting a cup of coffee or a newspaper. That's what I see. And I think they've taken the place of the mom-and-pop store. I go to my 7-Eleven, I know the guy behind the counter, he knows me. So I don't see any negatives in the situation whatsoever, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Walter Ott?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have some pictures I'd like to show you. Thank you. My name's Walter Ott. I'm a resident of 7-Eleven Colonial Avenue, a couple blocks away from several of the 7-Eleven stores. I am a retired naval officer and a resident of Gant...
I'm sorry, Mr. Ott, I apologize. Your wife, I didn't get the address. What address?
7-Eleven.
You live at the 7-Eleven?
No. 7-Eleven Colonial Avenue.
7-Eleven is the address.
Not...
711.
I was trying to figure that out.
No, it was tricky, I thought so, too.
No, it was tricky, I thought so too.
Okay. I say, what are you complaining about?
No, our house is reputable.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I'm a retired naval officer and a resident of Ghent since 1994. Norfolk has as its objective, the goal of safe and growing neighborhoods. We recently hired a retiring naval officer to attack, attract retiring and retired military to Norfolk and its neighborhoods. I can tell you what does not attract professionals and retiring military to Norfolk. It is crime and unsafe neighborhoods. 7-Elevens unfortunately are not good neighborhoods, are not good neighbors, and unfortunately are magnets for crime and heavy traffic of behavior. The previous speaker, who is not a resident of Norfolk, I'd like to point out, talked about 7-Elevens being a positive aspect. He doesn't live in Norfolk and doesn't see what we see on a day-to-day basis. As neighbors, we have asked 7-Eleven to stop single sales of alcohol in the neighborhood, they have declined. In addition, we have asked 7-Eleven management, who is here today, to address the loitering. It is still ongoing, as shown by the pictures that I've, I've passed to you. Ghent attracts renters, homeowners, and families due to its walking-friendly nature and the unique shops and restaurants that you cannot find anywhere else in the Hampton Roads area. Unfortunately, you cannot walk past the corner of Princess Anne and Colonial Avenue, the 7-Eleven there, and go to either Sacred Heart Church, or Harris Teeter, or pass the 7-Eleven without even, either being verbally or physically approached or harassed by the vagrants who loiter at 7-Eleven and that corner. This behavior happens on a day-to-day basis and has been observed by my family and numerous friends. My entire family has personally been harassed and threatened, and in fact, one of the other pictures shows a gentleman that when I was taking the picture, he threatened me. Within one to two blocks of the location that they're proposing, you have a high school, an elementary school, and a daycare center. One of the other issues with 7-Eleven is the trash generated by the 7, 7-Eleven, whether it's alcohol bottles, food containers, or wrappers, they're thrown throughout the neighborhood. I live five blocks away from 7-Eleven, and every week, I'm either picking up beer bottles or food containers from the 7-Eleven. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm asking for your support in, supporting what the Ghent Civic League and also the Planning Commission asked, and that's to not allow the 7-Eleven within our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Elliot Jurren?
Elliot Jurren, 144 West Belvedere Road, and I apologize, I'm going to reiterate some of the things that have already been said, but at least I'll say it quickly. I'm here to support the Snyder family in their effort to rent a portion of their property at 7-Eleven. And I'm disappointed that this location has been so contested. Unlike other 7-Elevens in more residential locations such as Grayton Avenue and Princess Anne Road, this spot is strictly commercial, verging on industrial. The closest neighbors are the 24-Hour IHOP, Speedy Car Repair across the street, Mystic Tattoo, and the Coke Plant on Monticello. The closest residences are the condos in the former Sears building a block away. I've heard it said the neighborhood doesn't need another 7-Eleven. Well, it seems that 7-Eleven is willing to commit a substantial amount of money in the belief it does. I vividly recall the controversy surrounding the arrival of Walgreens to 21st Street some years ago. I would venture to say that some of the most vocal opponents then are some of their most loyal customers now. What's more, since then, residents and landlords alike have welcomed such national names as Rite Aid, Cold Stone Creamery, Total Wine, Two Starbucks, Chipotle Grill, Dollar Tree, and lots more. While I've always been a strong advocate of locally-owned and operated businesses in Ghent, I'm also aware of the demands the current economic environment has put on them. To me, this project is less about a new 7-Eleven than it is about helping to sustain a local family business that's been in Norfolk for 61 years. The fact that the landlords will continue to occupy the location should serve to allay any fears regarding the new tenants. For three generations, the Snyders have operated precisely the type of distinctive specialty shop that helped shape and sustain the Ghent neighborhood we all love today. Approving this application, I believe, will be a great step in helping to assure they continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Grimes?
My name is Alice Ward Allen Grimes, I'm here on behalf of the Norfolk Preservation Alliance. We would ask that you deny the request for the special exception for the 7-Eleven because it is not in keeping with the 21st Street pedestrian overlay vision, it is not in keeping with the Ghent historic neighborhood or the character of the community of, of both Ghent and Park Place. As stated, there are numerous 7-Elevens, one in West Ghent, two in Ghent, one at Hampton, at Park Place, another one at Park Place and Colonial. There's enough 7-Elevens, obviously, they can make a business there, they wouldn't be coming, but that doesn't mean that it's a real need for the community. The, the owner of the current building does not have to lease out part of his building to sustain his business, if he needs to, he can find another, more appropriate and attractive occupant. We should look ahead, times are difficult, but eventually, that business will not be there. If they've got more space than they need, then perhaps they can move to a smaller building and something else could go in that corner that's appropriate and in keeping with the pedestrian overlay. I've never set foot in that Walgreens and I never will, because we have enough drugstores and we lost part of our historic character when that building went into place. We're going to gradually erode the 21st Street corridor if we add another 7-Eleven there. In time, something can be brought to that corner that's appropriate, and we would ask that you deny the special exception. Thank you.
Marie Snyder?
Good evening, my name is Marie Snyder, I reside at 817 Mowbray Arch. I am Steve and Ann Snyder's daughter. First, I would like to note that I am a co-owner of Kitch, a small business located on Shirley Avenue. I also hold a degree in historic preservation, so I am well-aware of the importance of supporting small businesses and maintaining a sense of place to ensure the vitality and livability of a community. I've worked at Gail's Wigs and Things throughout my life, and I know firsthand the challenges of maintaining this niche business. Since 1951, my family has put forth their best effort to provide the Hampton Roads area with wigs and hats. They would like to continue to do so on the property that they own, but they cannot ignore the decreased cash flow and the very costly but much-needed renovations. After years of considering their options, they finally came across a tenant that is willing to rent a space from them and pay for all the renovations to the building. This sort of opportunity is rare, therefore, both parties have tried extremely hard over the past few months to accommodate the needs of the community, so they may follow through with their plan. As you all can see from the pictures, the addition of the proposed 7-Eleven will drastically improve the streetscape. In addition, it will provide a nice amenity for those that live in the surrounding area. I know my parents will do their best to help make this 7-Eleven one that peacefully coexists with the Ghent community. In closing, I ask that you all consider his plan with open minds, as it is his property and livelihood. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny Blake, Mr. Blake?
My name's Johnny Blake, I live on Brandon Avenue. Thank you for hearing me. My comments are, I don't feel we need another 7-Eleven. For one, I grew up in Portsmouth, I was surrounded by them, they do bring the bad element around. I believe they have a shoddy upkeep. They are a corporate entity, from what I understand. The ones that they have here now that are corporate-owned are to be sold as a franchise. I feel that when the trucks come in, they will disturb traffic. So for me, I just don't feel that we need it. I mean, that's about all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henry Condi?
Good evening, Mayor Frame and Council. My name is Henry Condi, I'm president of the Ghent Civic League, 300 Colonial Avenue. We started down this road back in the fall, and the more I researched this, the more it's become a cautionary tale. I sent a letter, and I believe everybody's received, so I'm not going to repeat those, the facts, but there's been a lot of facts that have not been mentioned thus far. I support the small businesses, because we know that those dollars spent in a small business generate about $250. And Mr. Snyder, the point that what hasn't been made is that, according to Mr. Snyder himself, to the Ghent Neighborhood League, he had two offers that he turned down, which he leapfrogged to the third offer for the 7-Eleven. During the research, we have, we had in the fall when we started the discussion, six 7-Elevens. Over the holidays, number seven stood up. This is for number eight. I would ask, if you were to approve this, what's the final number inside a mile radius? And I'm using the center of Princess Anne and Colonial. What's the final number, is it nine, is it 10, is it 11? That's my question. We talk about neighbors building neighborhoods. If any of you would be starting your neighborhood from scratch, would you build your neighborhood with eight 7-Elevens? Probably the answer is no. There's been discussion that it won't be any impact to the community. Staff report has 930 vehicles per day on 21st Street, which is already pretty well-attended. The pedestrian overlay has already been addressed, the issue of the GBA, they were in opposition early on, but please do not give the GBA and the GNL the same weight. The GBA, their issues were entirely aesthetic. Our issues go several levels deep as far as the impact to the community. Impact to the community, it says that, no, this is commercial, so on, so forth. Here's the reality, last year, I had to request a four-way stop on 20th Street in Mantio because people don't want to deal with 20, 21st Street, so they're going, coming to 20, and they're using 20th, and now they're using Shirley and Princess Anne. Convenience, well, if you already have seven within a mile radius, that's 20-minute walking distance. If you extrapolate 54 square miles, times eight, that's 432 for Norfolk. So here's what's happened, the cautionary tale here is that I have reviewed, by the way, I may be the last, maybe not, but I asked for a couple extra minutes. I've done a lot of research on this, more than I really care to have spent on it, but right now, Norfolk has the dubious distinction of having the most 7-Eleven per square mile. We're approximating one per square mile. Our neighbors next door, Virginia Beach, is 4.45, and, and Ghent, eight, if this is approved.
Mr. Condi, can you sort of...
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll wrap it up, but here's the bottom line, on the issue of the revenue, the final issue of the revenue, you need to look at the revenue stream. It's not only about revenue, you need to look at the cost that the 7-Elevens in totality in Norfolk cost as far as police, so on, so forth, let alone the burden on the city. So the Planning Commission agreed with us, please listen to Planning Commission and your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the list of folks who signed up to speak on this matter. Are there any questions?
I have, I have one question, and I'm looking at the Business Association endorsement, and it's kind of tepid at best. The single-serve issue, which is, is a problem, and I live in Ghent, and I'm walking or riding or jogging or something, I live in West Ghent, and I know that, that that puts you at a disadvantage if you eliminated all the single serves throughout, but how about the ones in the core of Ghent, Colonial Avenue, Colley Avenue, and Hollenley Road? To eliminate single server in all those, because that's attracting the, the bad element to what I call the core of Ghent, the other's are on account on the outskirts, and I, you know, I love them, have, you know, the, I hear Mr. Perro and Alice, I don't, I don't think realistically anybody's going to tear down that building, and I share your concerns about that on the street, but I don't see that happening in the near future. If it's not 7-Eleven, somebody else is, I'm swearing, doesn't need a special exception. But I would just ask if they would offer to eliminate single serves in those three stores, which are in the core part of Ghent, and they do have a serious problem. Now, I live in West Ghent, there's a problem there, and we'll deal with that at a later time, but that's, that's, and, and I would ask you, and then I would ask if the Ghent Neighborhood League would, would think that might be a reasonable...
I know.
Yes, Steve?
Where I get my coffee?
With all due respect, Mr. Nguyen, we have discussed that issue probably over the last 120 days several times. It's been right up the flagpole, and we don't have the authority at this level to change really what's national corporate policy. We've said all along that if the city was, found a way to eliminate single cells in all those establishments, that we'd be happy to comply, but...
We can't do that, man, it's three, I know they were talking in eight.
Yeah, I think the issue there is the precedent it sets, and where does it stop, and what impact and effect does it have across...
Trying to work a compromise.
296 stores in the Hampton Roads area, so I, I, you know, I understand your concern, and we did look at it very closely.
Did you pare it down to three stores?
Court, have no authority, I don't have authority to agree to that, I'm sorry.
I have a question, Paul, may I?
Sure.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Tommy and I pulled up the Civic League map of the area, trying to figure out what Civic League this falls in, and it doesn't fall within any except, I guess, the Business Association, but it's not Civic League. Looking where the Ghent Neighborhood League is, I understand, did you hear anything from Ghent Square?
No, we did not.
Did you hear anything from Park Place?
No, we did not.
Kensington?
No, we did not.
Ella Heights?
No.
Lindenwood?
No.
Old Huntersville?
No. And I think letters went out to all the adjacent neighbors as well as staff for...
Those are all the adjacent, well frankly, those are all the adjacent...
Right.
Closest to this particular store that I have seen, and you've heard nothing from those?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready? Call the roll. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protegero?
Paul, can I say something?
Sure.
And, and that, Tommy and I just pulled that up on that particular issue of the other civic leagues. I think Mr. Condi wants to speak.
No, 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 we're, we're finished, Henry, thank you.
I gave an opposite to Mr. Rowline.
Well, he, they asked, he was asked a specific question, not, not tonight. No, I'm sorry, Henry, that's out of order.
Well, and that was, in looking at it, we saw that, and those are other civic leagues that are within the area. In looking at this particular issue, I did call one of the planning commissioners today, and this is a serious matter, there's no doubt about it, and I think that we've taken it serious, and I called one of the planning commissioners to say, what happened, why did you vote against it? That particular planning commissioner said it was because the, even though they had heard from the neighborhood association, it was the pairing with GBA that was very problematic to them. That being said, the, once he found out that GBA did give the approval with the conditions that were presented, that particular planning commissioner said that he would now have voted for it with the changes because of GBA. Again, doing my homework, even though it's not my ward, it is the city, and it's a significant issue that we have to examine and to be fair to all the parties. So that was an important issue today when I made the phone call to him to find out what happened. I am curious, if this was called Bob and Jill's Family Market, would it have the same opposition? And everything else remained the same. I understand that there may be some type of stigma that comes with 7-Eleven, but frankly, and I've said this before, that's the market. If you don't want it, don't go. And I'm not saying to can your business, sir, but the bottom line is, is that, that really is how you have to look at it. If you're the neighbors there, you're not interested, then just don't go, and that's just how it, that's just how it is. And I have to look at it, when I make my decision, I have to look at it in that manner to come to the right decision. I do look at the tax base issue, it does increase the tax base, it does improve the property in the area, even though it may not be with the overlay, and I apologize that I, I, I need to most likely educate myself on that particular overlay, I have not. I have not. But it is a vast improvement as to what is there. Even if Mr. Snyder's daughter says it dramatically improves the streetscape, then she must have the same idea about the wig as I do. I will also say this, and this is something that is important to consider in looking at this. The owner is in the building, and that, to me, plays a huge role in having to come up with why this isn't appropriate and why I will vote yes for. Having the owner in the building is a significant matter, that he'll be there basically on a daily basis. I know he's not there 24 hours a day, but it does make a difference in deciding yes or no in this particular case. I'm going to also say that the streetscape has changed. I did spend time here closely examining 21st Street and the new residences that are there, in particular, the apartments across the street, and in particular also the apartments that are down Monticello. And I think they're Alexander and Gant, they may be called. The number of individuals that are within walking distance, and frankly, it being convenience, yes, but those individuals may not walk to Monticello Avenue across railroad tracks to buy whatever provisions they are, whether it's a sandwich, whether it's a breakfast burrito, or whether it's a six-pack. They may not feel comfortable to walk that across railroad tracks to get that or to go the distance as it is up to Colonial. I do, you know, it really is, these decisions don't come lightly. You need, please understand that. And we try to do our homework, right or wrong, but we also, in coming to those decisions, I have to go through all these things in my head. And that being said, please understand why I will vote yes on behalf of this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel.
I just think it's interesting that in the last two months, we've probably spent more time talking about 711 proposals. And, you know, I hear a theme here, it's not necessarily just 711, but it's a systemic issue with how people utilize services from these retail locations. You know, and we just had a pregnant woman who was stabbed, I guess she was an employee, right across from East Beach and Ocean View, our attempted robbery at a 711. And I don't want to, I'm not trying to paint all the 711s with the same brush, but, you know, we have restaurants in Gant that are open until 2 o'clock and sell alcohol, and they might be a reputable restaurant, and, but you never know who's going to take it too far at that restaurant and walk out and, you know, cause a problem. I've asked for a presentation on how we look at alcohol sales all throughout the city and the inconsistencies with it in our neighborhoods, and we're going to hopefully get that presentation soon. But these issues are not just 711. You know, apparently, didn't somebody set themselves on fire in a grocery store in Gant? You know, down in Ocean View, we're having an issue with panhandlers and people being approached at a farm fresh. You know, we welcome these establishments because they do provide employment, but I think there's a bigger issue here when it comes to a systemic issue and what we're doing in our society. And I don't fault 711 for that, I don't fault the corporations for this. I think that, you know, as a city, we need to look at our policies overall and how we do business with all of our retail locations. It is, as Andy and I were discussing this, you know, we do our homework, we talk to people, you know, and we've heard some of the same complaints from the Broad Creek area, but this is not in a residential area, and to me, this is an area for business, and I support Mr. Snyder's attempt to keep his business open. So it's a private property, and I think that if he wants to move in this direction, that he should be allowed to do that, so I.
Dr. Webberly.
I'm disappointed that some of you, I think, have not been privy, and maybe this is Barclay and my fault for not expanding your all's appreciation of the work we've done at the Gant Task Force and the representation that the Gant Neighborhood League has for that corridor on the 21st Street, the work that we have done for many, many months to make that an area that people want to come and visit, an area that has some permanency to it, an area that although it supports private businesses, it is not a place that we encourage the type of business or retail of a convenience store. I don't think anybody can make or convince me that adding another 711 brings new business into Gant. It only makes somebody that goes to another 711 go to this one. So I'd be hard-pressed to understand that argument. I support Mr. Snyder. I'm disappointed that he didn't choose perhaps another business. We need to make plans in our city that will ensure that in 30 years, we are proud of what we have planned for this city. This is about planning. This isn't about the next bottom line. And I am disappointed that I have not been able to make that point with my fellow councilmen. I vote no.
Ms. Williams.
I do vote aye, but I just would like to say to Mr. Snyder, we've bought several really nice hats over the years from your store, and I'm glad that you're actually going to stay in business along with the 711.
Mr. Nguyen.
Yeah, I'm disappointed. I think we're hiding behind this corporate veil that we couldn't do something, it's obviously going to pass, and I'm happy that it worked out for Mr. Snyder, but I'm disappointed we couldn't do something more substantive to fill up our neighborhood, and if it's about, you heard it, and you continue to hear about the single-serve issue, and I guess the corporate, whatever corporate veil, it disappoints me because it's a huge issue. We have a huge issue with homeless, and we've worked hard on our task force, and, you know, as I share Terry's sentiments, I do, I am happy for the Snyder family, but I vote no.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Seven A, Mr. President. It's an ordinance granting a special exception to permit a retail goods establishment to operate after midnight on property located at 100 West 21st Street. Dispense with the charter requirement, free in the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Webberly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And seven B is an ordinance granting a pedestrian commercial overlay district development certificate to permit a convenience store at 100 West 21st Street. Dispense with the charter requirement, free in the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Webberly?
I'm sorry, I was confused. I was so rattled by that last vote. Obviously, I didn't support the last one either, and I don't support this one. No. I apologize.
Also, I thought we had the next.
Yeah, I was just so rattled by the whole thing. I should have been more in the moment.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
No.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Okay, our eight, please.
Eight is an ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation to the city from SL Nussbaum Realty, Inc. and Siemens Industry, Inc., each in the amount of $5,000 as a contribution to the opening events of the Tidelight Rail System. Dispense with the charter requirement, free in the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Webberly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a number of folks who have signed up to address the council.